Welcome to City Hall. We'll get started this morning with our invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask Councilman Pete White to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, but first, Mark Balthrop, the pastor at Redeemer Church of Oklahoma City, will lead us in the invocation. Would everyone please stand?
Let's pray. "We praise you, O God, and acknowledge you to be the Lord. We give you thanks today that you have given us this day in this city, this place where government is public and where freedom is celebrated. I pray, Father, that you will bless these city councilmen and women and our mayor with wisdom, with courage, with judicious understanding of what is right and good and true and beautiful. Father, I pray that you would bless us in all of your goodness, bless us in this city, and bless us today with the knowledge that all things come not by chance, but by your fatherly hand. We ask this in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, who dwells with you in the Holy Spirit on God forever and ever. Amen."
Amen. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." We're going to get started this morning with a presentation by our Arts Commission on the Cityscape Award. I'll introduce Terry Cooper and John Seward. If you all would come forward to the microphone up front, and we're going to be announcing the winner of the Cityscape Award. Terry?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Couch, members of the council, the city staff. I'm Terry Cooper. I'm the chair of the Oklahoma City Art Commission, and we're here to give the Curtis A. Schwartz Cityscape Award. The award was created by the Art Commission in 1982, '83, and I'm going to have to read this so that I don't forget. It was for Outstanding Design, Construction, Renovation or Restoration, Landscaping, or Other Extraordinary Artistic Treatments of New or Existing Buildings. In 1985, in memory of Kurt Schwartz, the award was renamed in his memory. And Kurt was one of the absolute shining lights in the city's arts community. He was a fabulous entertainer, and on behalf of Kurt, his family is here today, and I would like for them to stand, and I'd like to identify them, the members here today. We have his widow, Kurt Schwartz Puckett, his son, Stephen Schwartz, his business partner, Larry Bledsoe, and last but not least, his father, Harry Schwartz, who will be 98 years old next month. Please acknowledge that. Our award is going to be presented by John Seward, who chaired the committee that made the art selection.
Thank you, Terry. On behalf of the Arts Commission, I would like to introduce members of the Triangle Development Corporation.
Please come up.
Mr. Anthony McDermid, Mr. Pat Garrett, and Mr. Ronald Bradshaw. On behalf of the committee, we were pleased to nominate and to present the award to the Triangle Development Corporation for their inclusion in commissioning of a piece of sculpture in their Maywood, Brownstones at Maywood Development by Mr. Stan Carroll, a local architect and sculptor, called Live, Work, and Play. And I think it's an important way to show the community that in these developments that art really matters. So I want to thank them for this opportunity. Andy?
Thanks, John. Congratulations.
Mayor?
Pete, go ahead.
I might, when I was a very, very, very young man, I was in the YMCA Boys' Chorus, and Kurt Schwartz was the lead singer. And he was absolutely, and to his son, you look a lot like your dad, you really do. He was a jewel in Oklahoma City, and to have this award named after him is really an outstanding thing. I sang way back in the back row, but he was always out front, and he was just absolutely fabulous. You should be very proud of him.
Each month, the South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club allows us to honor our Employee of the Month. And you can imagine, in a city with 4,300 employees, to have one singled out, that person must be quite special, and that is certainly the case this morning. I'll ask Sonny Massey to come forward. Sonny's sitting quietly there on the third row. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Well, Sonny Massey has been a city employee for eight years and is a chief plant operator in the Water Quality Division of the Utilities Department. Well, Sonny Massey is a shift supervisor responsible for the safe and efficient operation of the Draper Water Treatment Plant. His duties include monitoring equipment and chemical and water flow rates, compiling data for operating records, and training and supervising plant operators. Well, Sonny Massey worked 18 hours beyond his normal 12-hour shift when the Christmas Eve blizzard of 2009 closed highways and prevented relief staff from getting to the plant. Well, Sonny took brave actions to ensure the plant's disinfection and chlorine treatment did not freeze up after 60 mile-per-hour winds blew off the heating system hatches on the roof, shutting down the heating system. Well, Sonny safely climbed onto the roof and replaced the hatches, then started a standby infrared heating system to bring the temperature back up from 47 degrees to 55 to 60 degrees needed for the chlorine feed systems to operate properly. Well, Sonny Massey, on his own initiative, plowed snowdrifts on the plant roadways using a plant tractor with a snow blade so that staff could make rounds to the chemical feed equipment and pump stations and safely enter and exit the facility. Well, Sonny Massey, a retired Marine, is very involved in his own sun sports activities and is a member of the bait of Oklahoma Motorcycle Club, where he's active in rider safety education, rider legislation, blood drives, toy drives, and other activities for the less fortunate. Well, this council desires to recognize Sonny Massey for his dedication, bravery, and commitment to the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Sonny Massey, March 2010, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
That's quite a story. On behalf of the citizens of Oklahoma City, especially those who rely on the Draper facility for water, thank you for what you did on Christmas Eve and for the other 364 days of the year. Now comes the hard part, though. We've got to get the council to vote on this. How about a motion? And a second. Cast your votes. All right. Congratulations. Thank you. Thanks very much. Take a motion on a series of appointments?
Yeah.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Comments or questions on any of the appointments? All right. Cast your votes. Item three passes unanimously. Item 3H is a resolution, and this establishes the MAPS III Citizen Advisory Board. I want to appreciate the council's work on getting the structure for that situation done, and hopefully we'll have the advisory board in place by the end of this month in time for the taxation to begin on April 1st.
Mayor, the structure of the board, as council has had a lot of input into it, is kind of the parts of the MAPS, original MAPS Oversight Board, parts of what's in the school trust, and part of what's in the Sports Facilities Oversight Board. It's a combination of, I think, the best of maybe all three of those. It'll be an 11-member board. Eight members will be appointed by virtue of awards, two at large, and one will be a council member. The terms will be three years, staggered three-year terms for the board members, and the council member will rotate every year. There'll also be a series of subcommittees. The subcommittees, outlined in their resolution, but the subcommittees will have two members from the Oversight Board, the South, the Large Oversight Board, and then that will be supplemented with stakeholders from whatever other area of interest happens to be out there. For example, if it's the Trails Board, you may have a member of the Trails Advisory Committee and that type of structure to try to accommodate as many stakeholders as possible.
You have other comments or questions from the council?
Move the item.
Okay. All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for February 23rd, and item B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for February 16th. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, I have several this morning, starting on page 11. On page 11, under item 8C1, item B, 1309 North Ross Avenue, we ask that be stricken. The owner has removed. Under item 8D1, on page 12, item A, 11913 Ashford Drive, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item C, 1810 North Nebraska Avenue, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item F, 1101 Northwest 11th Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item G, 2301 Northwest 19th, we ask that be stricken. We need to re-notify that address. Item I, 3700 Northwest 25th Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. And also item L, 224 Northwest 85th Street, we ask that be stricken. That needs to be re-notified.
All right. Any other requests? Any other requests for uncontested continuances? Or assess the council meeting convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are four items. Okay. Brian, go ahead.
I would just like to point out that item D is an item that has to do with the Southwest Library, and in the last three years that I've been here, I don't know if I've had any one topic that gets more questioned than where's our library. So I had one Sunday, so it's great to see that this is finally getting to move towards construction, so things.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
No.
Thank you. All right. Cast your votes on the MFA. Passed unanimously. Adjourn OC-MFA convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
I'd like to vote on item D separately, if we could.
Okay. This is item D?
Yes, please.
All right. How about a motion then on the other four?
Yes.
And a second? All right. We're voting on the OCPPA, items A, B, C, and E, and then we'll consider D separately. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. You want to say something about D, Pete? Okay. Have a motion then on item D. And a second. Comments or questions on this item? All right. Cast your votes. Adjourn OCPPA reconvene the council meeting with the consent document. Do we have a motion?
Move the document.
All right. Do we have any individual considerations?
X, please, Mayor.
What's that?
X.
X.
And O for me, Mayor, please.
Okay.
Mayor, we actually have a presentation by Bob Teener on items I, I-1, and II that may answer some of Councilman White's concerns, and may be appropriate to...
All right. Why don't we start there, then?
We've got, I've got a short presentation on two ordinances that are being introduced today for final hearing on March 3rd. First relates to changes to the noise ordinance, and the second relates to change in notice requirement for facilities that house sex offenders or people that have been convicted of capital offenses. The First Amendment is the noise ordinance. There's two primary changes. The noise ordinance is Chapter 34. It has a table in there that identifies each zoning district, the timeframe, and then the decibel levels allowed. That's what our inspectors use to respond to noise complaints. They're broken down by, excuse me, residential, commercial, and industrial, and then the changes are noted here in red. What we've done is, there have been multiple zoning districts that have been added to our ordinance that we didn't update this chart, so what we've done is, this ordinance would make those amendments. One thing to be noted is that Bricktown Core, the Neighborhood Business District, and then the three downtown zoning districts all allow mixed use, which we have, commercial, sometimes industrial, and residential. And so we put in a provision there that the Development Services Director will make the decision on which noise level we use. It depends if it's a commercial use in that district or residential district. So this basically just updates our noise ordinance, which is Chapter 34. The second one is, we're adding an exemption. Basically, what this does, it allows construction in the downtown, the DBD district, without being subject to that noise chart. What we found out is that there'll be multiple construction projects. There's a big one going on across the street that at times may exceed that noise level, and we needed a way to do that. Currently in the ordinance, what you would have to do is, they would have to apply for a noise permit from the manager's office, and they'd renew that every 30 days. A project like that that's going on for three years, I mean, it makes more sense to put in a provision here that would allow it. Now, this isn't citywide, it's just for the downtown. And this will also take effect for our public projects. When we redo the streets, they'll all be covered in this. Just as an example, we have had a couple of complaints on the Devon Tower, on that construction. We sent our inspector out, he did the noise meter test, and it wasn't, it didn't violate that noise ordinance, but we're doing this just in case we get down the road and we have some issue. That's really the noise ordinance. I can go on and do the, if you have any questions. The next one is, this was a result of a state law amendment that added some notice requirements to the transitional living facilities. Basically, what this ordinance does is that if someone wants to apply for a special permit in Oklahoma City to operate a transitional living center or halfway house for sex offenders or people convicted of a capital offense, they're going to be required to give notice to all the elected officials, the council people, county commissioners, and then any state representatives. What we've done in this ordinance is we basically, it's going to be their requirement to prove that they've made that notice before we will process their special permit. And so we've, on the next page, that's how we addressed it in the ordinance. We add that statement. They have to provide us that certified mail was sent, and they can prove that those notice requirements were made. As far as our ordinance is concerned, the only, there's no change to our special permit ordinance. We'd still send the same 300-foot notice to the affected property owners.
Bob, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
The medical and non-medical detoxification provision of this, could you give us some insight in reference to that language for what it's directed towards?
We're going to request that we delete that from this ordinance. I met with Dan Bremont in legal, and we need some additional time to research exactly what the intent of the state law was there. So I really don't have, I think the best thing to do there is let us talk about it with Dan and legal, and then we'll get back with you on, we had some confusion on exactly what the intent of the law was. So this motion should include the deletion of that provision, and I've provided Francis with an amended ordinance.
I just want to add my thoughts to that. The idea that you would include medical and non-medical detoxification with people committed of capital crimes and sex offenders is just another Neanderthal idea. I mean, that's just, that's, I mean, we're well past the point that we believe alcoholism and drug addiction is primarily a disease as opposed to criminal activity, and the idea that we would treat it at the same way we treat capital offenses, to me, is just, I don't know what we're thinking. I mean, I understand we're trying to follow the state law, so don't take this personally, Bob, but, I mean, I don't know what we're thinking if we think that's the way, the way we're supposed to be doing it. The first idea is offensive to me anyway, the idea that you have to notify the elected officials. I mean, so what we're going to do is make a political deal out of every opportunity. You know, we've got the sex offenders now confined to living under bridges virtually, so we're going to notify all the political people about which bridge they're going to live under so they can go get votes off of that. The whole idea, to me, is just a throwback kind of mentality that just makes me sick personally, but if we can take the, we can take the detox part of it out, I'd be happier. So if you can get that done...
Well, we have to, we have to respond to the State...
I know, but I'm saying if there's any way we could avoid it on the drug and alcohol treatment facilities, I want to see us do it personally. I'm just one.
We'll meet with the Mr. Counsel's office again and see what our options are.
Okay. And just to clarify, the notification, or, I mean, is the new statute, is it, does it have language that specifically states that the, is it the owner or the individual who is going to reside in a particular location has to notify each individual elected official that is in that particular district or in that particular ward, or?
It's in the, in the city. So any official in the city that they propose one of these facilities, they have to be notified. So it wouldn't be by ward, it would be by the city limits, and it's the proposed operator of the facility has to make that notification.
As opposed to just making a public announcement in your standard publication notices that either in the newspaper or the journal, one of the publications that give public notices, they are required to give a written notice to everyone that's an elected official in the city?
That's correct.
What elected officials are notified?
City council, county commissioners, and then any legislative elected official.
Okay. So a house or a senator at the state level? Any other comments or questions on this item?
It's a question, Your Honor. This covers facilities only. An individual who bought a house, for instance, and lived there as a former capital offender, whatever that might, assuming he hadn't money to get it ordered, he wouldn't have to make any notification, or would he?
Not, not based on this. This is just for if they, our ordinance requires transitional living centers to have a special permit, so if they're asking for a special permit from us, they have to comply with this.
These are for organized operated centers. Okay. Thank you.
Would it cover, was this intended to cover things like Oxford Houses also?
Those are actually one of the things that we're going to talk about when we...
I mean, as it's written, it seemed, would seem to me, you know, I don't think they can do that. I think there's plenty of precedent, legal precedent, that Oxford Houses don't fit that category, but the way this is written...
They don't fit special permits.
Yeah, maybe not. That's probably...
Those facilities are just...
That's probably why they'd be out, okay.
They're allowed by ride.
To me, it's just onerous that we're going to make it more difficult. We've got, Oklahoma operates under the theory that we're all going to be safer if we can lock everybody up, so now we've got about a third of the people in the state locked up. We're trying to find, make it more and more difficult for them to operate, and now we're going to make it more and more difficult to locate a place where these people can be locked up in. I mean, I'm not arguing with you, I'm not arguing with anybody that would think this is a step in the right direction. This is just goofy.
Any other comments or questions on this item?
Just one other question.
Okay.
If a person is convicted of a capital offense, and at some point in time that individual is released and have served the punishment, I mean, because it's kind of confusing that you say that a person convicted of a capital offense, then if the person that commits a capital offense is convicted, more than likely, he's not going to be out anyway. So I don't understand why that they use such high-fluted language when, you know, if you're convicted of a capital offense, a capital offense means just that, a capital punishment.
I think the intent here is that at any point in their sentence, if they transition into a halfway house because they, you know, for whatever reason are allowed out, they would be in this category. So this is, a transitional living facility would be a halfway house where they're transitioning from the prison into...
But a person that chooses not to be a part of a transitional living house and lives and rents a house or purchases a house anyplace else, that person doesn't have to give notice to anybody, right?
That's right.
We have other items on the consent document to discuss. Want to wrap up item I-2? All right. Item X. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Item X is a, let me get my notes here. Item X is a resolution dealing with gold bonds. And just briefly, in historical perspective, the gold bonds were authorized under the 2007 bond program. As I looked at the gold bond program through the eyes, I see the gold bonds being used to incentivize businesses to create primary jobs here in Oklahoma City. And so as a member of the Economic Development Trust, that's the paradigm that I use when I look at these proposals. This particular proposal right here, while it fits the overall umbrella of gold bonds, does not muster the test that I apply as far as creating primary jobs. This $400,000 is based on a consultant study, a very thorough consultant study nationwide that was commissioned to look at incubators and launching new businesses. And the study was very thorough in pointing out the number of these incubators around the country. Some are private-owned, some are public-owned, some are public-private partnerships, some are under universities. But there was nothing in that study that indicated the economic benefit from creating the incubator, only that the incubators were in place and operating. In the past, we have had some excellent incentives for the gold bonds that all had a clawback provision, which meant that if the company did not create the jobs that were in the program, there would be no money expended. This has no clawback. This is a provision that gives $400,000 to start up an incubator-oriented... This is a provision that gives $400,000 to start up an incubator-oriented consulting organization under I-2E that will pay for administrative expenses for the organization for three years. And there is no guarantee, as this goes on, how many primary jobs we'll create out of this. People have said, "This could create another Microsoft." And so, if we just hit one with this $400,000, it's a winner. Well, I'm not myself willing to bet on that kind of an arrangement and expending $400,000. So, my suggestion, and see if I can-- I would like to have this brought off of the consent docket and have it deferred for two weeks so that in case the council members have not gone into the detail behind this, they'll have an opportunity to study this and make their own decision. So, that's-- can I make that as a motion, Francis?
Yes, you can.
I'd like to move that this be deferred for two weeks to give the council an opportunity to come up with their own decision.
Second. Okay, I'm just taking a moment to glance through it myself.
Mayor, if I could just further. Mr. McAtee is not incorrect on it. We've had the GOAT bonds out there that have been primarily paper for performance for primary jobs, the same model that's in place primarily with the Quality Jobs Act of the state. This is a additional program that was proposed to the Economic Development Trust and approved by the Economic Development Trust as a way to get some new startup companies in there. There's a study that was in place that recommended this. I-2E screens the companies for us and it was approved on a-- it was approved by the Economic Development Trust with Mr. McAtee.
It was approved two to one, and you can guess who the one was.
Well, it seems to me, though, to be in line with the priorities of the Economic Development Trust. Larry, what-- you think this is just more risky than you would prefer? Or do you think it does not fit with the direction of what the trust is supposed to be accomplishing and what we told the voters when they passed the election?
I'll use your word, more risky than intended. And it's an extension off of the original way we started with the clawback provisions to create primary jobs.
I see. Okay. That's-- it's worth further discussion. I'm in favor of his deferral for two weeks so we can look at this further. Any other comments or questions?
Before I defer, I'd like to have Kathy, if you would, comment on if there's any downside to deferring it, not taking this action right now. Is there any timeline that we're disturbing by deferring it for two full weeks?
I may have to get Tom-- is Tom Walker here? We may have to get Tom to answer whether or not there's a downside to deferring it for two weeks. I know that he did have a deadline on getting a letter of support to the EDA for this grant, but we may have issued that under the Economic Development Trust already, so--
Kathy?
Tom, you want to come?
Thank you. We're waiting on the-- this approval to bring in the other match to this program. This is a federal grant that we're bringing in from the federal EDA, and it requires a one-to-one match.
I see.
So, this investment with other partners--
Is our approval subject to the match, the federal match? In other words, would we be putting our money up if the federal match does not come?
No, no, Mr. Mayor, you would not.
Okay, so it's only reliant on the match. Let me revisit my support for the deferral for just a moment. Larry, I sense that you're not seeking more information. You have enough information. What you're wanting is for the council to have more information before they decide.
My seeking the deferral is if they feel they need more information, this is the way to get it. If they feel they do not need more information, then we go ahead and vote it right now.
Well, we've got the two experts in the field right here, so if they've got questions, this would be appropriate time, I think, to ask.
You know, that's not a bad idea to go ahead and do it while it's-- while we're dealing with it. And then we can still vote on a deferral if the council would like and just see how comfortable people are with this. How about we just take questions? Meg, you're responding, you'd like to talk.
Well, and I think I just have kind of a quick comment to make sure I'm correct. When this program was set up, the total amount in the 2007 bond issue was $75 million total.
Right, that's correct.
So, we're looking at $400,000 to establish this program that would advance essentially emerging technology companies.
That's correct.
One thing that I'd like to point out is that this money doesn't necessarily go to the companies. It go-- it's a grant that will be provided to the city and to I-2E. The match is provided by several other partners, including the Oklahoma Business Roundtable and the Presbyterian Health Foundation. And that the program is designed to create primary jobs, I mean, to help grow that entrepreneurial small business sector of the Oklahoma City economy. And it is just for Oklahoma City companies. It isn't a statewide program, even though we have some partners that do have, you know, activities outside of the city limits. You know, I-- the program is a three-year grant, first of all, so that $400,000 match that the Economic Development Trust will provide is also spread over three years. So, it isn't as big an impact as one $400,000 payment.
I said, the note that I made to myself kind of mirrors Larry's comment, but it's in reverse. And, you know, we may remember that a little while ago Forbes magazine identified Oklahoma City as the number-one place to start a new business. And when the editor of Forbes came to speak to us at a luncheon, he said, "What this community needs to do is find that one new Microsoft, find that new Bill Gates, find that young person that we can, you know, create headquarters in our own community." I think that's exactly what this Economic Development Trust money is for. And so, Larry, I respectively have to disagree with your perspective.
Brian, then Skip.
First one's a math issue. This is seeking a $1 million grant and $400,000 is not 50% of a million dollars.
That's because the rest of the match is provided by those other partners.
Okay. And the second thing was, is Microsoft established an incubator like this, or was it just--
I have no idea.
They-- that's an excellent question, actually. Microsoft did-- Bill Gates actually attracted angel investment early on in a setting where people were assisting him. He brought in $40,000 of angel investment.
But he didn't use the government to help him start Microsoft?
Well, we would have to go back to figure out where he got that assistance.
My guess is probably not.
Right.
Skip?
Are there any identified areas in reference to the-- this incubator as far as identifying particular geographical areas in the city that has been identified?
No particular area in the city, the city as a whole. So, to help all technology-based companies in this region.
And how many members are part of the Oklahoma Business Roundtable?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear--
The Oklahoma Business Roundtable. How many members are part of that?
Their membership base, I'm not really sure. Well over 100 companies, I would assume.
Here in Oklahoma City?
I don't know how many are members of that organization in the Oklahoma City area, but a fair number. That organization has CEOs of all the major corporations in Oklahoma.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this?
Councilman McAtee mentioned that the clawback provision's been in every other such application. Is there a reason that that's not a part of this, not a provision?
Well, I think one of the reasons is that it isn't a grant to a company. It isn't a typical agreement that we have with a company to meet certain performance requirements or add so many jobs. So, there isn't-- there isn't a clawback feature in this because I-2E is another government-supported entity that works with companies to help, you know, grow that technology-based sector of our economy. I do want to say, though, that the next step in this process is if we're successful in receiving this grant, is that we'll enter into an agreement with I-2E that will spell out what those performance standards are and what results we expect to achieve from this program. It isn't that it's going to be without performance measures and results. We're going to expect them to reach out to so many companies and provide us with some result feedback.
As will the feds, so you'll have the same audits and all of those kinds of things on an annual basis.
I'm sure there's going to be a level of due diligence to this. What sort of comfort level do we have, though, that we don't incubate a company that ultimately decides to leave for the next round of venture capitalists?
We've been doing some version of this kind of work for over 11 years now, and it's a small number that we see move out. I mean, most of the companies we're starting have a reason to be here and they want to be here. And, you know, we manage investment funds on the other side as well, and so we have provisions in there that keep them here or they pay back. So, but it's just not been an issue. We just don't see that kind of flight. Most of this is about homegrown entrepreneurship. And the reason we start these kinds of programs is to help these young entrepreneurs put roots in our community early on so that doesn't happen.
Right, okay. Yeah, Brian?
What is the-- what is this? Well, it's kind of a twofold question off of what I think Sam was saying. If they-- if there is not success and we have these measures and there's no success, what is the penalty for not fulfilling those measures? I mean, you said there's a standard that we're using to measure and see if they achieve those, but what is the penalty if they do not?
We haven't gotten that far because we haven't received the grant and, you know, we haven't gotten all the information from the EDA and the Department of Commerce on some of those kinds of things.
And then, what is the success rate of a business incubator just versus just a regular guy just going out starting a business on his own?
It-- the national business incubator statistics show that you have a far greater chance of survivability if you go through an assistance service, and it's almost a four-to-one. It's a huge success ratio. So, what we're doing--
Okay, so if you're starting a business in the open market, 1% of businesses started last 10 years. So, this is 4% of businesses started last 10 years. Is that what you're saying?
No. In fact, the kinds of businesses we're talking about create 2/3 of all the net new jobs in the U.S. each year. And the stats show that those companies that go through and access some level of professional services early on have a greater likelihood of being successful in the future. So, what we're doing is putting in place an advisory service network to help those small businesses that start up here be stronger from day one.
Skip, then Meg.
The study itself, do we have the study available?
You do.
I can get you a copy of it.
I would like to see the study so I could look at some of the benchmarks that were identified that drove to the issue of the demand for the incubator myself as far as the various type of projects.
Now, remember, this project is not funding an incubator. We're not creating a new incubator with this project. We're creating a-- an organization that will facilitate new entrepreneurs. And it may or may not be an incubator project when it gets through, but this-- we're not funding an incubator. I think we've used that term a lot this morning, and I want to make sure everybody understands. We're not creating a structure for a company or an entrepreneur to come in and use. We're creating a service that will apply to a group of entrepreneurs and train them in starting a new business, giving them the tools necessary to move forward. And it may or may not require an incubator kind of environment to go forward.
So, this is more for the structure than the actual incentive?
Yes, sir.
That's right.
Right, yeah, that's--
Okay. And it does have a federal match?
And it isn't-- it isn't for a physical facility necessarily. It's for the consulting services that will be provided in that facility. And that's what the study talks about, is that what entrepreneurs really need are professional help. You know, they need consulting services and advice and mentors and, you know, CFO kind of advice and CEO kind of advice to really be successful. Now, there is a physical location for this to all happen, but, you know, what this is really designed to do is to set up consulting services that are to advise and help these companies have the tools that they need to be successful.
But how do you-- how do you measure all of that? You know, just the fact that you tell me that a person that's starting a business needs a mentor, that he needs a consulting service, and it's almost like saying, "Well, he need an accountant," and he needs a bank. But that's all part of the natural ingredients of starting a business. And to some extent, I'm wondering, like Councilman McAtee, if-- are we basically being the first arm of the business? And if you call it an incubator or not, the-- I mean, it states clearly that it's commissioned through a business incubator. So, whether or not it's going to be in a physical structure, whether or not it's going to be an individual that's going to be consulting out of his car or whatever, I think ultimately you still get to the same issue that I think Councilman McAtee has a concern, and I do. So, I would just like to see the study itself.
Mayor--
Yeah, Pete?
My question is, I don't think the original question's really yet been answered. That is, if we defer it, are we-- does this create a-- does this kill it to defer it? I mean, are you-- have we already made commitments that would prevent us from deferring it today? If we defer it for two weeks, then come back in two weeks and approve it, which I tend to be in favor of it. But if we defer it for two weeks and come back in two weeks and approve it, are we-- have we done something terminal to the project?
Two weeks would not kill the project. We're really needing the city's help, though, to bring on the other partners. So, we only have through March to get the match for the feds. So, we're running up close.
So, is the match for the feds, is it guaranteed? That if we give our support, that the money from the feds is a guarantee? Have they told us that? Have you told--
I'll show you exactly what the feds have told me. I had a conversation with the EDA last week, and they have said we have passed all of their economic development hurdles, and they see this as the best practice for the way to start tech-based entrepreneurs in regions. And so, please, share with us your letters of commitment, and then it will go to their legal review. That's the last step. So, we have passed all of their economic development hurdles.
Let me ask one again, though. I mean, if-- let's just say we defer it for one week and give everybody more of an opportunity to understand it. Is that going to give you time to do what you need to do by the end of March? We're getting this continuous thing all the time. I think if one of us has a concern here, that's a legitimate concern, I think Larry's concern is legitimate, I think we have a responsibility to each other to honor that, unless we're going to do something fatal to the project.
The difference here is that Larry's not wanting another week so he can look at it.
No, I know. I understand. I know what he wants. He wants me to--
Larry's wanting another week so we can look at it.
He wants me to look at it, and I will look at it next week.
And we decide we don't need to look at it further, then I think Larry's comfortable with it.
No, I understand.
Okay.
And Larry's not interested in being more informed, he's interested in voting against it.
No, I understand. I understand, but that's just the way the game is played, it seems to me. That's I understand. We shouldn't be looking into his motives this, that deeply to determine--
All right, Brian?
Well, and I appreciate-- I appreciate what Larry did this morning because to think that I at least don't have the time to read every single word of every single document that's provided to me. And so, as I'm going over things, I might not pick up on something, and this is a big concern, and I'm glad that Larry brought it up. The second thing is, you said, Kathy, you said that they were going to be providing consulting services? And who provides that?
I-2E will make selections of consultants through, you know, through their--
Who is I-2E? What-- who are the principals?
Yeah, I'm the president of I-2E, and we have a staff of 14 people, all from the private sector, professionals who are skilled in helping start advanced technology companies. And in fact, we've received an International Economic Development Award for the way we do this.
Is it for profit or not for profit?
We are a nonprofit company.
Nonprofit, okay.
Yeah. All focused on starting companies here.
All right. Are we ready to vote on the deferral?
A week, Mayor.
One-- well, somebody ought to make a motion, but that's why--
A week, two weeks. I'll make it for a week if that-- yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. We're going to vote on a one-week deferral. Cast your votes, and the deferral passes by a count of six to two. All right, now we're on to item O. Meg, do you want to discuss item O on the consent docket?
Very briefly, I just wanted to-- I did mention this in remarks from council last week, but item O is the final acceptance of the Stockyards Gateway. And again, I just want to encourage people to go see it. It's a terrific project, a wonderful addition to the Stockyards neighborhood, and I just wanted to make note of that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? We have a motion and a second, then we're ready to vote. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Okay, we're on to the concurrence docket. Any comments or questions on item seven?
Move the concurrence docket second.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously, and we're on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a couple of zoning cases. Item 8A1 is a zoning case in Ward Eight. The address is 13501 North County Line Road. It's currently AA agricultural. It would become a planned unit development district. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant's represented by council. And has anybody signed up to speak on this issue? Okay. Now, this is a development that employs a philosophy called work, play, and live.
Now, this is a, a development that employs a philosophy called work, play, and live, where we have a, a area that is going to be a mixed-use, have office, commercial, and residential opportunities in it. And it's a trend, I think, that is becoming more prevalent all over the country. It's been revised several times at the request of the Planning Commission. There are a number of TEs, and the applicants have agreed, I think, to all the TEs that were presented. Are there any questions of the applicant? Do you have any, any move of approval?
I was looking at the oddly drawn lines on this graphic. Why is the, the track of land drawn so, in such odd shapes?
Mayor, Members of Council, Dennis Fox. As Councilman Ryan indicated, this is a zoning case that has 79 acres. It has a number of different uses that will be provided within this property. And what we've done is we've tried to provide for not only commercial, but also residential, office. You might have a retirement facility that'd be placed within this facility. It's a unique parcel, Mayor, in that the Kilpatrick Turnpike is on the west.
Mm-hmm.
So we have no access points on, on the west side, it's a highway. And what we've done, and we will have to come back in and do two things, we'll have to plat it, and we'll have to, we will have to provide pursuant to your new ordinance, specific design plans when we get ready to deal with each parcel. But the reason that we've split it up the way we have is that we didn't want to do, as an example, on County Line Road, commercial all the way down to our south property line. So, commercial's appropriate to a point, and then we added office in, then you have a common area at the very south point. When you go back to the interior of the property, you're going to have roadways that are going to connect both offices, commercial, and the residential. So, it, it was a well-fought-out and planned development that Kendall Dillon and Steve Crane, the developer, put together. And they looked at each parcel and, and tried to determine what would be the best fit. And as, as your question indicates, this is not the norm. Typically, you'll see just one or two parcels, but on this one, since we had 79 acres, we tried to come up with a scenario where we could fix and place all the different uses within the site and make them work and connect in a unique parcel which has a highway on the west.
Is, is there a frontage road at this section of the turnpike?
No.
Okay. And so the access is from County Line?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, I'm good to go on. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Pat, do you make a motion?
And the only comment I might make there was a request for an easement, and it has been submitted with the county.
Okay. Have a second? All right, cast your votes, we're voting on item 8A1. Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Item 8A2 is in Ward Two. The address is 6615 North May. It's currently a simplified planned unit development, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development. Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. See the applicant present? I'll, I'll just mention, it's a, the spud permits a parking lot, and it's a one-use restriction for this lot to allow a drive-through lane, sir, in conjunction with the restaurant.
Correct.
I don't, we didn't have any protest at Planning Commission, it was unanimous approval. Are there any protests here today? I think we can save you the time, sir. Move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8A2. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 8B is our truancy ordinance. I think the council's been well-versed on this particular issue. We have a couple of people that have signed up to speak. Anyone want to speak before we bring people up?
Mayor, I'd prefer to hear the people first, but I'm, I'm prepared to offer amendment today that I've, this is with the chief about.
You've discussed that with me. You want to briefly inform the council, if you haven't, about your changes on the fines?
Yes, it has to do with the, it has to do with the fines, where we have three levels, graduated fines, 50, 102.50, and the amendment today would reduce the third and final hit to $150. But I would like to speak.
Okay. Well, we have a couple of people that have signed up. Why don't we bring them forward? Rick Williamson?
Good morning, and we will need your name and address for the record, please. Yes, sir. I hope I'm in the right spot. I've not addressed the council before. My name is Richard Williamson. My address is 8801 Salisbury Lane, which would be in Ward One. Have a couple of items that I'd like to address here. One would be a simple change of wording in the ordinance. Originally, as it has to do with education by other means, is listed under, under A. As we move down into section 30-435, it is in section A listed as, except for children being homeschooled is allowed by law. I would ask that that wording be changed to, except for children receiving an education by other means, to be consistent in the wording, and also because there is no legal definition of homeschool under state or local law, as far as I understand it.
Okay.
The second question is, is more of a question that I have, and that is, under the temporary detention, is listed as, under C is not justified unless there are specific facts causing an attendance officer or other authorized person to reasonably suspect that a truancy violation is occurring. As that relates to students that are being home-educated, how, how would that be handled? For instance, if, you know, there's a home-educated student during the school day that has, has gone out to lunch, or has gone to an afternoon job, or has gone on an errand for the parents, or for whatever reason, is stopped by a truancy offer, officer says that he is homeschooled, what happens then?
Are you, you're asking? I'm asking. Bring the police chief up then to see if he can respond.
The way the process is set up is that, as truancy officers, we have to, before we can write a citation and even detain somebody, we have to determine that, that student is not in school, does not have permission to be out of school. So, if the school, the district itself is checked, and that student is not enrolled, then it'll be coming upon the officer to determine through contact with the parents or any other means about whether or not that child is actually being homeschooled or not. So, it's actually a defense, if a person is, is homeschooled, that obviously, you know, we'd have to follow up and do an investigation like we would do on any other case. But actually, that's why the truancy office, why we have an agreement with the Oklahoma City Public Schools, so they can access records, check the records, and determine, because even if they're in, in school with Oklahoma City, there may be an excused absence. So, we, we can't cite them until we determine whether or not they're, they're supposed to be in school or not.
Okay, so the student would be stopped, he would say that he is being homeschooled, and then?
Correct. If we can't, the officer, an officer in the field, if it's not a truancy officer, because we have designated specific truancy officers that have access to, to the school records. Officer in the field would have to check with a truancy officer and have them identify whether or not that child's supposed to be in school.
Okay, and that would happen at that time?
Yes. So, we, we just don't detain them. If we can't, if we can't determine at that time, then we will make a report. Officers in the field will actually make reports and submit that to the truancy officers for them to follow up on. But the child wouldn't be detained unless we could determine whether or not that they actually are truant.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and the follow-up procedure would be at a later date and handled how?
Correct. Well, the truancy officers themselves, our division, our truancy unit, would actually contact the schools, determine whether they're supposed to be in Oklahoma City Public Schools, try to contact the parents, determine whether or not they are actually being homeschooled through interviews with the parents and so forth.
Okay, which would be no different than any other student?
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else, Rick?
Uh, that's all that I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming down. Reverend Vernon Barris?
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Well, we'll need your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Reverend Vernon Barris. My address is 800 South Kelly in Edmond, Oklahoma.
Okay, and you would like to say what?
Well, my purpose here today is to speak on the truancy ordinance. I represent the Oklahoma education system, and also the BMA, a legion of Oklahoma City, and on behalf of my councilman, Skip Kelly. We are concerned about submissions that we have met on yesterday, and some of them is talking about the ordinance of students reaching to 10 unexcused absences before they are being able to give a citation. So, our concern is to be able to work with the school districts. Among our clergymen, we have clergymens, we have mentors, and we want to try to form a partnership with this truancy organization ordinance in order to try to prevent some of the things that's taking place in our city of Oklahoma City. I do agree that this should not have happened, it's gone up to that point, but we're at that point, so we are concerned as, as citizens of, of our district to try to prevent some of these ordinance. One thing that we are concerned about is there's under state law, parents can face charges in county court if their child has more than 10 unexcused absences. Our point is to not to let it get to that point, because we feel to get up to 10 excused absence, that child undoubtedly, it's possibility they will not be able to get back into the school system. So, we as citizens, we are trying to partnership on this order to be able to make contact with the school board, with the police department, and also to make sure that we come in contact with those children, that we may be able to mentor to them, to the parents, and to be able to try to get them back in school before it get to the citation point. Another thing that we are concerned about is, although the city's citation would issue the student's parents would have to appear with their child in municipal court. Most of we find in our, in our district where, uh, City Councilman Skip Kelly's district is, most of these parents is raised by grandparents. Grandparents who will not be able to appear in court with their childrens, so it's going to be of hardship, it's going to put a hardship on the grandparents, because 80% of them is raised by grandparents, so they are not able to be able to appear on their children's behalf. And another point that we'd like to make, that the chief of police said that we feel that the term ordinance is really going to give law enforcement in school a tool to be able to force these parents into municipal court. We feel that we won't be necessary to force them. Our committee is to try to encourage them and motivate them through town hall meetings, through gatherings, to whatever it takes, to make these parents available and make them aware of some of the things that's taking place in this ordinance, because many people don't read the paper, and many people don't understand what this ordinance is all about. So, I want to thank Councilman Skip Kelly for taking the initiative. We are here to support him and able to get this message out to the parents, so that we can eliminate some of these ordinance that has been implemented in this ordinance. So, that is what we are here today, to try to work with the city council, to the police department, and to Skip Kelly's district, to try to get the word out to the parents and to the peoples of that district, to make sure that they understand the importance of this ordinance. So, I'm here today on behalf of this BMA and clergyman. We met yesterday with some of the citizens of Oklahoma City in the seventh district, is to be able to let them know what was going on. So, they had me to come down today to see if there's any way possible that we can work with this organization to prevent some of the things that this ordinance is going to accumulate. And we are aware that this ordinance is very much needed. We're not against anything that has been implemented in this ordinance. But what we are trying to say is give us opportunity to work with the police department, also the city council, and also those in our district to try to prevent some of these things that's going to take place.
All right, I appreciate you coming down here today. Skip, do you want to say anything on the board of Reverend Barris?
You know, uh, thank you, Reverend Barris, and, and I would like to say this, that as, as he so well-stated, you know, it's really a sad state of affairs that, as much as some of us have had to fight for equality education in America, and as we, we leave the month of February that celebrated the, the African-American heritage in this country, and all the great legacies that was laid by educators.
Yes.
Not politicians.
Right.
But educators in this city, and every city in the United States. And now, we, we look at the educational system that we have today, and based upon the, the last report, it, it, it basically states that overall, there is a F. And in some respect, we have continued to create these barriers, we have continued to create these separations, and, and, and now we have homeschool, we have charter schools, we have magnet schools, we have every other type of school that you can think of, other than just putting your kids in public schools and getting a public education.
That's right.
I'm a little offended to some extent that, that it has gotten to the point that we have to look to law enforcement to-
That's correct.
-implement a, a, a strength of, of enforcement as relates to just coming to school. And it's not just a law enforcement issue. It is, as the pastor stated, it is a community concern. It has always been a community concern. And I think that he's correct, that there should be, and maybe there should still be a, a little bit of reconsideration in reference to this, to, to sit down and have a more engagement of a conversation with some of the community leaders. And, and in some respect, I think that the schools, I know the superintendent supports this, that was here last week, but I'm sometimes kind of perplexed about the fact that who is really going to be the person that's going to be punished as a result of this? And, and as I, as, as the pastor stated, it is not just Ward Seven where you have an abundance of care being given to children by grandparents and great-grandparents. And I would hate to see that a, a 75-year-old grandmother or great-grandmother would be marched down here in our municipal court and, and having to, or any court, and having to answer to charges because a child that maybe she cannot control in the best way, by no fault of hers, is facing punishment before any courtroom.
That's right.
I, I just say this because I feel like that we should not have ever had to get to this point, it should never got to this point, and I wonder if this is really going to be the saving answer to the problems that really exist in our school systems in this Maybe we could lock all the kids up that don't go to school, and, you know, I'm wondering what's going to be the, the end result of, of yet the progress of our-
You know, Skip, I would argue we are ending up locking up the kids who aren't going to school. I mean, that's, that's where we're headed. I mean, what we're doing now is not working.
There's, that's, I feel that it's an issue where the city, the parents, it's a whole issue for the whole community. The community is also including the city of Oklahoma City, not just one area. I believe the point has come where we, as the city officials, religious leaders, the police department, and all those who are involved in this, to come and sit down and try to formulate a system. And I know that, I believe that it can be worked out, and I do believe- I do believe through prayer, through communication, that we can come up with a system where we will not have to lock up all our children. We, our police, our penitentiaries now is overflowing with those type of kids, because they have dropped out of school. And our point is to try to reach those children before they drop out.
Skip, what sort of...
And I believe that the education system starts at head start.
Reverend Burris, hold on.
Yes.
Skip, what sort of monitoring system would you like to see in place, so three months from now, or a year from now, we can get some sort of feedback? Because I understand if these kids are living in your ward, you're going to hear about it if this program is not going to be working successfully and having the results. But I think we're headed toward this direction, and to see if this is going to have some role in the process. We need a follow-up system to see what the result is.
Right. Our point is to integrate our leaders, our church leaders. I believe if we can get our church leaders involved, it's going to start with the church. But if we can get our church leaders involved, I think we can handle this thing before it get out of hand. That is our point.
Well, we can all help we can get, and I'm sure our police department would love to work with you guys in some sort of mentoring and counseling and going forward, because we're going to need help.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we're not going to be able to do it without the community's help. This is not going to be a police and school district-led issue.
Right, right.
We're talking about parenting, the oversight of troubled kids.
Right.
Yeah, Pete, and then Sam.
Nothing that, nothing that is meaningful in this ordinance would prevent your organization from helping. I mean, I agree with the mayor. The system needs all the help it can get. There's nothing in this ordinance that would stop that. You know, I'm somebody that raised a grandchild, and I understand the problems of raising a grandchild, but I tell you that, but I didn't just, I didn't just take my granddaughter into my home and let her do exactly as she pleased.
Right, I agree.
I mean, I took her into my home, and she did it the way I said to do it, and that's, and I'm sorry for grandparents that don't have that kind of control, but if the kid's not going to school, then they're not going to school. It doesn't really matter whether grandma's a good person or not.
Right.
We talk about charter schools. I'm not a big fan of charter schools either, but I will tell you this, they work, and they work because there's parental involvement in them. That's what's wrong with the schools. Now, if the churches want to help and step up to try to get some of that community involvement to replace the fact we don't have family involvement anymore to the extent we used to...
Yes, sir.
We can't, you go to a PTA meeting, there's three people there. That wasn't the way it was when I grew up, and probably wasn't the way it was when you grew up either.
You're correct.
But we're looking for other solutions to replace the fact that parents are abdicating their responsibility to take care of their kids.
Yes, sir.
That's why you have grandmothers taking care of them and great-grandmothers, because parents are walking off from it. Nothing that this ordinance does, not one thing in this ordinance, would prevent an organization like yours from helping. In fact, I agree with the mayor, we ought to be encouraging organizations like yours to help, because community-based mentoring, community-based involvement with young people is going to be a whole lot more likely to succeed than police-based involvement.
Yes.
But we're to the, we're to our wits' end. We're to the point where the principal at Grant's last week locked students out for not showing up on time and sent them home, didn't let them in, didn't give them a tardy, said, "Go to house." And that, and that's where we are. The system is so out of control that it's going to take this kind of measure to try to move it back.
Yes, sir.
Don't take this as a, as a, an effort to cut the community out. I think this is, this is an alarm to the community to get back in, to bring folks like you involved in it. That's what this is all about. Sir, our point is to see how the city council or the police department, how can we integrate our forces together? That's why I'm here today. I think the first place to go is to your school board member of your district and talk to him about it. That's the first place I'd go. I'm not, I'm not supposed to be giving advice, but everybody knows that I don't worry about the rules anyway.
Yes, Brian, then Skip.
On Sam's point, I mean, the whole point of the progressive penalties is to make it more and more uncomfortable. And Sam, I understand that, you know, that a hundred dollars is a lot of money. I mean, I, you know, I would stop and pick up a hundred dollar bill. But the point is, is that by the time that you get to the third, the third offense, you want the pain to be evident enough that they do something about it. That's the point. So I'm not, I'm not real comfortable. If we're going to do this, I think that we ought to do it the way that the police department outlined it, with no amendment, and go with that. If there's a problem in the future, we can come back and fix it. But, but to take part of the punishment away and make it less uncomfortable, I don't think is the way to approach this if we're going to do it.
Well, we're not expecting that to happen. We're concerned on how to prevent that from getting to that point. That's where we are today, and we are looking, and I talked to the city leaders, to our community leaders, on yesterday, we had a meeting, so we're trying to form a coalition. And we have called out educators, we have called out peoples who are retired, we are putting a coalition together in order to try to come together with our district, not only our district, but a district throughout Oklahoma City, and try to formulate something so that we can reach this situation before it get out of proportion. We are trying to prevent it. We're not trying to eliminate anything that's in the ordinance. We're just trying to get some feedback and some, some assessments to how we can put this together as a community and as a group...
Okay.
...and as a city.
Skip speak, and then I'll try to wrap it up.
Legal Kenny, can you point out what the defense is for a parent that has no knowledge that the child is, is absent from school?
Ed Hasbrook is here, and I believe he worked with the chief city on drafting this. I'll refer that question to him.
Ed Hasbrook, City Attorney's Office. Councilman, I think the question was the defense on a parent without knowledge.
Right.
But the ordinance is primarily targeted toward the child. A parent can come in, as the police department has developed this, the penalty in the citation is actually a last resort. I understand the program, we will actually have made contact with parents, put them on notice ahead of time. But if the parent comes in and stands in front of the judge and says, "I didn't know," it'll be a question whether the judge determines they should have known or not. If, if, you know, you take them to school, and they run out the front door and out the back, I could see the judge going, "Well, that's a little different than if you just say, 'We don't care whether you go to school or not.'" But it would be a judicial call.
But we're starting at the age of twelve?
I'm sorry?
We're starting at the age of twelve?
The way, the way the statute, our ordinance is mirrored after state law, and it starts at age twelve to up to eighteen, when you're required to be in school, and applies only to those that are subject to compulsory education.
Now, this is where I have a problem. Are we, are we bound to age twelve as far as this ordinance because of the state statute?
I believe so. I believe that the city truancy is a statewide concern, and the state statutes are explicit in what we can and can't do. So in order to be safe, we've kept strictly to what the state law allows us to do. We're not going under age twelve, if that's the direction, and we're targeting just at age twelve to eighteen.
Skip, what's your problem with the age? Which, which direction are you trying to move in?
Well, for one, I think you can clearly see from all the statistics, the statistical information as it relates to the performance levels of students, that if you wait till they get to twelve and thirteen years of age, you have absolutely nothing to work with anyway.
Okay, so you'd like, you'd like to see it younger?
I mean, I just, it's just appalling that if we have to be mirrored to that, then that's what it is, but I just think that...
Yeah, I mean, we could go, you know, through our legislative committee, we could probably get a change in state law. I don't know. We could certainly attempt to get something at the state level that could lower that, that age. I don't, I can't imagine that the state is against us having stronger truancy laws in effect, so...
I'd like to see some statistics about it.
Yeah, why don't we look into that further, you know, beyond this meeting and this discussion today? But if that's an issue, that's something we ought to address.
We're talking about truancy, we're not talking about performance...
Right.
...in this particular ordinance.
Right.
I think one of the major problems facing Oklahoma City School District is the dropout rate.
Right.
And I would, I would guess that one of the significant indicators in the possibility of dropping out is a truancy record.
No, no, we know that.
And so I would suggest that this ordinance, maybe not perfect, but is a step in the right direction to do two things, identify those children who are at risk to dropping out, or some other remedial means may be taken. And secondly, as somebody pointed out earlier, we need to bring the parents back into it.
That's right.
Parents or grandparents, they need to be part of the problem, part of the solution, I should say. Their absence is the problem right now, and I think this ordinance does that. At a certain level, when the truancy becomes a significant problem, the parents are brought into the equation, and I think that's important.
I think that we probably mirrored the ordinance after the state. I don't, I would wonder if we shouldn't just ask the municipal council officer or the police department's council to look again to determine whether or not we could go low or not. I mean, I, my guess is you just mirrored the state ordinance and used twelve, and we haven't given a lot of thought to going below that. So if you just, you don't have to respond to this, but if you just look at it, and if you decide there is a possibility that we can go lower, I think most of us would agree to go to eight, probably.
We could change it...
Right.
...at any time. Yeah, Sam?
Mayor, and Brian, this is a lot more than the $250 fine. I want to get back to that, but, you know, we've got, we've got a voluntary compliance operation right now. I mean, if we want to go look at the kids down to eight years of age through a state law change, that's fine, but we're working with those kids right now, with our truant officers. You know, just the past semester, we've been, we've been with this program for one year with two truant officers, and just looking at last semester's statistics, the number of students contacted by truant officers were 708 students. Before our officers intervened, these students averaged three school days per month absent. After being visited by truant officers, they average one school day per month absent. We are having some remarkable success with voluntary compliance, and this is at all, this is at all ages. This is elementary, middle school, and high school. I have had the opportunity since this was introduced to visit with chief city several occasions, visit with members of the school board, and last evening, I met with the PTA officers of Western Village School. That's a school out on Hefner, south of Hefner, and just west of Western, to get input from them. And I'm convinced that the chief city, the truant officers, with, and before we have this ordinance and with this ordinance, are committed to do everything first through voluntary compliance. And then we look at these punitive measures, and I have not had anybody react really negatively about the punitive measures that we've gone to that extent, except the extent and the severity of the high, of the high end. To make the same point, understand the point and the gradation. But we're looking at a student population that's ninety percent, I mean, these are, this was out in the paper a couple of weeks ago, probably all read, come from families in Oklahoma City. Ninety percent of our forty thousand student enrollment, families with income levels barely above the national poverty line. As Reverend Burris has attested to, and Councilman Kelly, twenty thousand, that's half the student enrollment, live with grandparents or other relatives.
That's right.
Those are other relatives, that might be, they live, they live by themselves as well, the older teenagers. You know, it's, it's, when we, when we move to the, from voluntary compliance to punitive measures like this ordinance suggests, I think it behooves us in every way possible, Reverend Burris has spoken to it, heard Skip speak to it, I think we all would agree, that we have to be very clear in communicating this to the public, to the parents, to the grandparents, to the students, in every way we can. One of the ways suggested to me last night by officers of the PTA, and I talked with chief about it, it may not work in this ordinance, is that the first citation would be a warning and not a fine, and that that warning would state that the next offense will be fifty dollars, the next offense will be, and such, the great... And chief feels that within the ordinance, we probably cannot accommodate that, that through internal policies of the police department, that that could be addressed, so that we could, we could through policy, address the notification and the warning upfront, that everybody knows, student, parent, grandparents, school, when the student is picked up, that this is coming, the hammer is coming. And I heard nothing from any of the conversations. I did hear from the vice president of the school board, Phil Horning, whose concern was the severity of the extreme end of the punishment, and that's why I'm back to this amendment on the ordinance. Brian, two hundred and fifty dollars in middle-class America for you and me makes, makes the point, no question about it, and that, and our student probably isn't going to get to that point, or our child, and if they do, it's really going to, we're really going to take notice. Two hundred and fifty dollars for some of these families could put somebody out of work, could whatever, adjust the severity of it. It's not the idea that we don't make some graduated punishment. I'm just suggesting we do that a little bit more modestly and get the same point across. So in offering this amendment, it's to, it's to respond to the concern about just the severity of the high end of the punishment, and then to find some way internally, I guess separate from this ordinance, that we can use the judgment of the truant officers on that first occasion through perhaps some policy, to, to issue a warning on the first trip.
Okay. I'd like to move forward on this. Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to offer that amendment. I have two other amendments.
All right.
One is on, at the request of the municipal council's office, on, in section thirty dash four thirty-three, in the third line after the word Oklahoma City, there needs to be a comma inserted just for the purpose of clarity. And then we also need to make the amendment, I believe, to make it consistent with the rest of the language, as the homeschool gentleman talked about earlier, and that's in four thirty-five. I've got some language, but I think we could probably allow on Kenny to fix it. He's got it, he has notes to fix that, so it's consistent throughout the ordinance.
Okay. Do you want to separate your amendment from Sam's amendment?
That's fine. Mine are really housekeeping, really.
Reverend Burris, I want to thank you for coming down, and I can assure you, this is a conversation that's taking place between our police department and the school district, and I'm sure you can have a seat at the table. But thank you for coming down today and pass along our best wishes to your...
I want to thank each and every, we have been really enlightened. I want to thank each and every for your support.
You bet.
Thank you, Skip Kelly.
All right, so Pete, I'll take that as a motion on your two amendments, and we'll vote on Sam separately. Do we have a second then? All right, yeah.
Mayor, just one other question, please, for a point of clarification to the chief. Chief, on any given point, a, the truant officer, one of your officers that made contact with a child that within the school day should be in school, that he finds that's not in school, that officer can immediately coordinate with the Oklahoma City School Board, and they can alert him as to that child's status within the Oklahoma City school system?
Yeah, part of the agreement, the reason we had to sign an agreement with the Oklahoma City Public Schools is so that our officers could access attendance records. Before, we were not allowed to do that, and there has to be that agreement in place. So yes, the officers would actually have access to those school records and be able to determine whether or not that child is excused or not, prior to that child be taken into custody or a citation issued, or both.
So I guess my point is that, so I won't have to hear this from somebody saying that, you know, they didn't even verify whether or not my child was supposed to be, or had a legitimate excuse for being out of school. The, the school board has the sophistication to relate that information immediately to your officers, is that right?
We get the records on a daily basis. We get the records on, on attendance on a daily basis. The system is in place now, so that we actually, we send out the notices if the child is absent from school and unexcused. We actually do that ourselves now. We have the program in place with our truancy officers, and then a non-sworn person that actually oversees that program. So electronically, we get all that information from the schools, based on their attendance. So we are the ones that actually, you know, we're the ones that actually monitor the attendance records for the public schools. I mean, we don't do it at my individual school, but we get the information from each school and do it as a whole for the district. So yes, we have access to that information. That's the purpose for the agreement, so that we can legally have that access by state law.
And how much does the school, as far as the school board, how much energy do they plan to put internally, within their own program, as opposed... they plan to put internally, within their own program, as opposed to basically, as it seems like now, just outsourcing this whole issue of children being in school to be the burden of the city of Oklahoma City? And if that's going to be the case, then why don't we just go ahead and be a little bit more involved in the whole process?
Well, we're still, we're still at the mercy of attendance officers within the schools on making sure that the information they provide us is accurate. So the schools still have to be, and that was part of the issue in the beginning, and Dr., it's Dr. Springer addressed, because the attendance records were, and not all schools were consistently being, you know, accurately provided. They want to, but Dr. Springer has really been aggressive in making sure those attendance officers for the school, in some cases hiring an additional position for attendance officers, say in some of the high schools, they actually have people that are hired to be the attendance officers within those schools that we work with. So they have a huge role in being able to provide that information accurately, and it goes all the way down to the individual teacher that's taking, that's taking the role and making sure those roles are taken on a daily basis, so we can determine whether or not that child is in school. So they play a huge role and have done a much better job of providing us with that information, so that we can take action on it.
All right, let's we vote on Pete's two amendments. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, passage unanimously. Now, Sam, you have an amendment that would reduce the fine on the third offense from 250 to 150. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes on that amendment, and it passes unanimously as well. Thanks, Chief.
Now we need a motion.
Oh, now we need to vote on the ordinance, I forgot that part.
Move the ordinance.
All right. Cast your votes, and the ordinance passes. Small details. All right. We're on to a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8C?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes then, pass unanimously. We're on, going now to a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8D, unsecured structures? All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item 8E, I understand we do not need executive session on that item?
That's correct.
All right. We have a motion and a second on 8E, it passes unanimously. Item 8F, I understand we have a presentation? All right. Are we going to deal with F and G together, Jim? Is that, is that the plan, or will these be?
Well, I think, I think we can cover F, the presentation, and, and at first, and then we'll come back with G.
All right, and we have one person who has signed up to speak. I guess we can hear from that person following the presentation.
Jackie O'Connor is here to start the presentation. She and Joe Van are going to talk about item, item F, for us this morning.
Good morning. And this morning, we want to go through a presentation about the item on your agenda for the urban renewal plan adoption and for the relocation policies and procedures. And first of all, to kind of go back through the history of where we've been and what we've talked about in the past, the quarter shore redevelopment area was identified as a part of the quarter shore planning process when the relocation of I-40 was announced. We began that planning study in 2006, so it's, we've been working on this project for about four years now. In September 2007, council authorized the city manager to negotiate for the purchase of land in the priority area of the quarter shore planning area. And that was basically the area from EK Gaylord to Walker, the current I-40 alignment to the new alignment. In 2008, the city council received the quarter shore framework plan and recommended its adoption to the planning commission, and in 2008, in August of 2008, the planning commission approved the quarter shore plan as an amendment to the comp plan. As a part of that quarter shore plan, there was a chapter on implementation that recommended a directed market approach be used to develop, to redevelop the area. The directed market approach is one in which a public entity would undertake the public projects and would control specific parcels, early-stage parcels for redevelopment. So the urban renewal planning process, or the urban renewal plan and the process for urban renewal is the best way that we have to implement, the best tool that we have to implement that recommendation. Three weeks ago, the city council approved the Blight Resolution, which was the first step in the urban renewal planning process that spelled out in state statutes. And the urban renewal plan was then approved by the Urban Renewal Authority on February 23rd, and was presented to the planning commission for review as to whether or not it conformed with the Oklahoma City Comprehensive Plan. And the planning commission approved the plan on February 25th. So this hearing today is the next step in the process, and notice of all the hearings has been published and posted in accordance with state law. The urban renewal plan includes several key objectives, and what I wanted to point out about these objectives, that these are the city's objectives. These are the same objectives, the same objectives that we had in the quarter shore redevelopment plan. And those were to promote economic development, to create a new urban neighborhood, to connect the downtown core to the Oklahoma River, and to facilitate the development of the new boulevard, the Central Park, and the area around the park, and to create an active river This is the urban renewal plan boundary, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joe Van Bullard, the Director of Urban Renewal, to go through a few more specifics about the maps and the, and the planning area.
Thank you. I'm Joe Van Bullard with Oklahoma City Urban Renewal Authority. The red line that is the boundary for the urban renewal plan is exactly the same boundary as the Blight Study that came to city council three weeks ago. It is a bit smaller than the quarter shore planning area. The quarter shore planning area included the Mary Gardens, the Cox Convention Center, the Forge Center, and then the blocks underneath there, and, and other areas a little bit further to the north. But those areas were not included within the urban renewal plan boundary, as is shown on this map. The acquisition area, which I think is probably at this stage, is the critical thing that is on most people's mind, most of the business owners, property owners, even some of the few residential properties that are in the quarter shore area. If you will notice, the blue boundary, which is, there's one of them that is between the existing I-40 and proposed I-40, which is directly in the middle, and then another acquisition area that is to the south of the relocated I-40 area there. The green area in there is the actual park boundary of 70 acres, both the north and the south. Sometime I refer to it as a Central Park area and then the Promenade Park area, the smaller portion that extends on southward towards the river. But both of them together are approximately 70 acres. The, it is interesting, when you start to look at this map, there are 692 total acres within the urban renewal plan. In this, in the acquisition area alone, there are approximately 62 percent of the property parcels up there that are vacant. If you look at the south acquisition area, you get into an area where you have almost 72 percent vacant. So you do see that there is a lot of undeveloped vacant property, not only within the acquisition area, but in other areas within the quarter shore area. The, out of the 692 acres, it's surprising that over 270 acres are devoted to right-of-way streets, interstates, railroad right-of-way, and those, as much public uses like that. Then if you take out the 70 acres for the park, and a few more acres that ODOT owns, which is not right-of-way property or, or interstate property, you get down to where you have just about exactly half of the 692 acres, 343 acres are available for, could be available for private development. That relies upon the private redeVELOper to a large margin. As Kathy mentioned, this, this part of the process is going in with the limited dollars for the acquisition of the park area. And I might say that there are only dollars identified for the green area. The map's $3 for Central Park, Promenade Park, are just for the green areas. We can't use any of that for the border or the buffer areas on either side of the green area. Funds will have to be identified for, for those purposes to, to move into that stage of acquisition, even though the city has allocated some dollars already for acquisition in the area. One more thing before I go to the next map, you, why you see the little indentation in the blue line on the Central Park area there, that's because the Union Station sits on the bottom, and then the postal facility that the city has already purchased, so that wasn't included in the acquisition area. The acquisition process is the Urban Renewal Authority will issue an RFQ to acquire the services of an acquisition relocation firm. There are several within the city area that are qualified to do relocation. This is what they do for a business, they know all the federal regulations, and our acquisition relocation policies will almost, almost mirror the federal regulations. We have worked with the city, both the planning staff and the legal staff, and have taken off some of the federal titles within the relocation acquisition policies, but for, you can say without any mistake that what our acquisition process will be, will mirror the federal rules and regulations.
Joe, on that, do the acquisition and relocation costs that the Renewal Authority uses, are they one and the same as our city policies for acquisition and relocation?
If you, if you go strictly by the federal guidelines, which again, I said that we, on these, been working with the city, we took off those federal titles. Urban renewal in the past has always gone, there's two separate processes, there's an acquisition expense, and then once that is determined, through an appraised value, through the negotiations, and then there's a relocation allowance that comes in, whether you're a business, whether you're a residential owner, or whether you're a tenant. You can be a tenant in a, in a rental residential property, and there are strict guidelines, procedures on how you are compensated into another like, safe, sanitary, decent housing.
I'm sorry, maybe I should ask Kathy, or she can answer later. But if we, we go out and acquire a piece of property, not using the Urban Renewal Authority to do it, are our acquisition and relocation costs, do we use the same?
Yes.
Okay.
And that, that's the next agenda item, right. And again, map's $3 are only available for the park purchase of those 70 acres. When other funds are identified, then the possible acquisition of those areas in the buffer areas on either side of the park land. The relocation, again, which is the next agenda item, you have to have a feasible procedure built within your urban renewal plan, which we do, for the relocation of both families, businesses, and tenants, and it's based on the Oklahoma Urban Redevelopment Law. The quarter shore urban renewal plan requires the city in Okura to follow the policies and procedures for residential and commercial acquisition and relocation services. Relocation policies and procedures, again, the eligible benefit for the property owners, whether they be a residential property or business property, or for a tenant, includes relocation. We follow the regulations very closely, the federal regulations. And again, the, the urban renewal is working with the city, we're almost in a subcontract role with the city, because we're, we're doing this lot step together with the city. The next map, I think you can start to get a, an indication of just how vacant the different parcels are throughout the whole area. Again, 62 percent in the north area part of the land, north of the relocated I-40, 72 percent vacant in the south. The next map we have is the, this is quite telling, and I think it not only shows the three historic properties that are identified in the Oklahoma Landmark Survey, you have the Salvation Army, then you have the, a trucking company dock and central office there, and then the building to the south is neighbor to neighbor, down on 13th and Harvey. But you can see the, the footprint of the buildings and just how vacant this, this entire area is. So with that, would be happy to answer any questions?
I have a couple of questions, I think, to clarify some things. Now, if, if I'm not in the green area, but I'm in the adjacent area, the renewal take area, but it's not part of the park itself.
Right.
And I don't want to be bought by you, I want to get with some of my neighbors and put a, the property together and redevelop it on my own and submit a plan to Urban Renewal to redevelop that. If I'm a property owner on those side areas, can I do that?
Yes, sir. There's a, there's a process called a owner participation agreement, where one owner could get with the owners on both sides, if you're in that block strip on either side of the park, and bring forth a proposal that meets the guidelines in the quarter shore renewal plan, which again, mirror the quarter shore study area. You're looking for some type of mixed-use development up against the park, possibly to create some, some traffic and let it be symbiotic with the park there. That, that is a very permissible, and in fact encouraged, because the Urban Renewal Authority, working with the city, there's not just a great deal of funds out there to, to do a lot, so you want to encourage all the private redevelopment you can.
Okay, now, if I'm outside of the blue boundary, I'm the next block over, and I want Urban Renewal to take my property, will they do that?
I doubt it right now, because I don't, the funds are certainly not there. I mean, now, in the future, if there are people that want to voluntarily, voluntarily sell to the Urban Renewal Authority slash city, funds could be identified if that might, where they want to sell might possibly be a spark or an interest that would get further redevelopment.
Could be, but at this point in time, the plan does not call for any property acquisition outside of the blue boundary.
The way the plan is written right now, even if somebody voluntarily wants to sell us their property, we would not be able to buy it. We would have to amend the acquisition area in order to purchase that property. That, that was the other thing that I wanted to point out, is that this acquisition area is very specific, and, and if we need to expand it at any time in the future, it will have to come back to city council in order for that to happen. We can't change the boundaries or buy any land outside of this area without council approval.
Okay. Yeah, Larry?
Just to, off of that, another question. Again, to reemphasize, Kathy, on the, on the chart that's up here right now, in the green, that's the only land that can be used, to be purchased by the, by the, by the map's three money.
Right.
The green.
Yes, yes. We could only use map's three money to buy the property for the park that's in the blue area.
And the budget for that was, I think, $130 million. That's including the acquisition of the property, any relocation expense of any property we buy in there, plus then the development of the park and its amenities.
There is money to, to develop the, the Central Park and the, the strip just south of the new alignment. There is only funding to acquire Promenade Park in map's three, and, and clear it, remediate it, and, and sod it.
Okay. And then, one of the, you've mentioned historical buildings in the area. One building you did not mention, and I think I know the reason why, the Little Flower Church was not mentioned, because that does not appear inside the, the area here.
That is not.
It is preserved, and that's.
Yeah, it's on the front.
That is not in the acquisition.
Nobody should worry about that.
Right. The only historic survey we've, we've had time to complete is, is the acquisition area, and Little Flower Church is outside of the acquisition area.
All right. Brian?
I have a question. There are, it looks like two square blocks, south of the Mary Gardens, west of the Forge Center, that are not included in this, but just west of there, there's a, looks like six or eight square blocks that are included in this. Why are those two square blocks left out?
The, the reason is that those blocks are already in a The reason is that those blocks are already in a urban renewal plan area that covers the central business district. So the blocks to the east, on the north side of the current I-40 alignment, those are already in an urban renewal plan area.
And then, the next thing, I lost my train of thought, that never happens. When you were talking about a person can comment to you with a plan for redevelopment of their own property, of all the redevelopment that Urban Renewal does, what is the percentage of that, how often does that happen? But actually, they present a plan, you accept it as a bill.
In the most recent Urban Renewal Plan of North Downtown Plan, several of the areas that were designated for acquisition area, the owner took care of them themselves, i.e. the parking lot where the old Y used to be, they came in and developed that, and Urban Renewal did not have to buy that property. The Myriad Inn up on Classen Drive, they scraped that off and put a development there. The other property was, oh, where the federal campus is, or the new federal building, that was an acquisition area, but we were able to acquire all of that by negotiation and never had to, you know, go any further than that. And then the federal government, of course, built the building there. But in earlier days, the owner participation agreements were very seldom used.
Well, you know, it's not unknown, but I have a huge problem with the way that this works. You know, to stand up here and say this is for economic development, and then to turn around and look at somebody who's had a business down there for 70-plus years, and we're going to wipe his business out, he's going to be out of business. He's going to be, it's going to be done. And this country was founded on personal property rights, and I have very little respect for this process. This is way beyond the scope of what eminent domain was intended for. And to take somebody's property who has worked their life down there, and to put something in there to where somebody else can develop it, or a park or something, is unconscionable. And it is hard for me to stomach to sit up here and know what's going to happen, because it was, like, when my fellow councilman told me the other day, you know, a lot of this stuff is decided before he gets here. But to sit here and have to look at somebody who is going to be out of business because somebody in the government or a governmental entity thinks that they know better what to do with that property than he does, is unconscionable.
Yeah, Pete?
Kathy partially explains a question that I had, because I had, when MAPS 3 was going on, it was my understanding that the park was the portion north of the new, between the two I-40s, the old one and the new one, plus a narrow strip immediately south of the new I-40. And I've given that advice to constituents that own businesses south of 10th Street, in the acquisition area but south of 10th Street. And what I heard you say was, there's no money to do anything other than, no money to redevelopment, that, redevelop that perpendicular strip between the river and 10th Street now. And that was what, when we talked about MAPS, when the park was sold, in effect, at MAPS, it was that north, it was all north of 10th Street. Was I just asleep at that? Because that's exactly what I thought happened.
The funding always included money to purchase.
Buy.
To buy and remediate and clear the strip.
Not build the park, not build the park south of 10th Street. The reason I'm asking is, one of the concerns I have is that, is that, I don't share all of Brian's concerns, but I do share this one, in that people need to know, they need timelines, they need dates, they need to have some certainty. Many of them have businesses, the one in particular I'm speaking about, has a certain useful life left to it. It would be extremely expensive on both the part of the city and the part of the business owner to replicate that business someplace else because of the changes in the law. They'd like to be able to stay there for the useful life of that building. I've always told them, based on what they've told me about the useful life, is that they'll probably be able to do that. But when I saw this long perpendicular piece here, it started to give me pause as to whether I'd been telling them properly or not.
Yeah.
They're not in that area. They're in the gray area immediately to the west of it.
Okay.
But even people there need some sense of certainty about what's going to happen. I think we're going to have more problems with uncertainty than we are with.
Or when?
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think most people that have businesses there wish they had businesses someplace else. There may be people that don't, obviously, I'm sure there are. But for the most part, I think most people would prefer, because of the way the area's been let deteriorate to some extent by the city, and to some extent just through natural causes. But I'm interested in trying to provide some certainty for people that live or own property, say, in the gray area that's inside the take area, inside the acquisition area.
And I think, you know, the next step for city staff is to develop some of those timelines and priorities, and some of that will be driven by the MAPS 3 and the Citizen Advisory Committee process as well. But I believe that our first priority is going to be acquiring the Central Park north of the new interstate. ODOT has already acquired that strip south of the alignment. That's already acquired, ODOT's done that, we don't have to buy that. Another thing to remember about the south strip is that ODOT has a commitment to help us redevelop that piece, too. They have to put some funds into that as part of the mitigation plan that was a part of the I-40 project.
That is, between 10th and the river, is that the, we're talking about the same strip?
Pardon me?
Or just the strip immediately adjacent to the interstate?
Just the piece immediately adjacent to the interstate, on the south side of the new alignment.
That's the same park I've always envisioned, north of 10th Street.
Right, yeah.
All the way to the, to where the Boulevard will be.
Um, you know, and.
The surprise to me is this strip south.
I don't exactly know how to answer that, except that it was always in the budget that we had for that park project in MAPS 3.
But see, it's not on the map that we use back here, the little model.
It's not on the model, no. No, because we didn't ask anybody to come up with a development scheme for it.
Okay, Larry?
On that strip, Kathy, I hate to beat that horse, but I'm a little confused. I thought that that strip going from the new relocated I-40 down to the river was going to be programmed for athletic fields and just open space.
That is the recommendation in the Cordishore Plan, that when it is developed, that it be developed as a much more active sports, ball fields, athletic facilities than the north park.
And then I heard you say that we are going to acquire that land in the years ahead, some type of a phased approach, and quote, remediate it, unquote, with sod.
No, remediate, I meant, there may be brownfields issues in the area, so we need to remediate the brownfields issues, you know, demolish any of the buildings in the area, and then we'll sod it and mow it.
And so that mowed and sod could be just open play area for.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Definitely, definitely.
Any other questions for Kathy? Yes, Skip?
Do we have a list of the different businesses that are in existence that's part of the acquisition area?
Yes, we do. I don't think I brought that email with me. Let us in have the businesses on. God. I don't know that this has it. In the, let's see, is this, in the north area, there's 39 businesses?
Fifty-nine. Those are parcels.
Okay, we have that information. Jevan?
We've done a initial assessment down in the area to determine which of the properties, that last map that you saw that had the vacancy versus the occupancy there. We've tried to determine how many businesses are actually functional there, but it's a drive-by, it's looking at business licenses, et cetera, so it's not an accurate assessment. From what we've been able to determine, I believe there were 39 parcels in the north park area, and of those, I can't remember the exact number, but it was about 50% that were actually, had a business on the parcel itself, and then a similar number, I think, maybe even less, was even less, on the south portion, where you had 29 business parcels down there, but only, less than half of those were actually occupied by a business. I think in that case, there were about nine.
All right, any other questions?
One more.
Then Skip, then Brian.
Okay, why doesn't Broadway, or whatever, we have the acquisition area on the north part, a block-wide strip on either side of the park? As the park, as the perpendicular part goes down to the river, we only have an acquisition area on the west side. Why wouldn't that, why doesn't that blue take line go all the way south to the river?
That was one of the other things I wanted to mention about Promenade Park, is that one of the things that's, that, there is a ULI advisory panel in town this week, working to look at the Cordishore area and to answer some specific questions that we have about how the redevelopment should occur. And one of the questions that we're asking them is, where should Promenade Park go? You know, it's in a concept plan, as being shown running right along Robinson, but would it be best to shift it, or narrow it even, you know, to put it in a different place? So the acquisition area was kind of drawn to frame it. Ben, could you put the map back up with the acquisition area on it? So that if it did move a block, or, you know, or half a block to the west, then it would be framed on both sides by gray area that, you know, would not necessarily be a priority for acquisition.
Really, the question that's out there, would the west side of Robinson be better off as development area or as a park?
Would it be better to be retail?
You mean the east side?
The east side.
No, it's the west side of Robinson, the east side of the park.
Well, I guess I'm just not understanding, I see the theory that you're going to have this buffer, you're going to protect the park on the north park.
Right.
What I don't understand is why that theory doesn't hold as you go south, why you're only in that kind of, we're going to protect it mode on the west side of Promenade Park and not on the east side. When you look at the businesses that are on the east side, they're certainly as unlikely to be supportive of a park as the ones on the west side are.
Right, but I think, I think what the thought was, is that we were trying to be very conservative about the acquisition area, and if the park did shift a half a block to the west, then there would be that buffer strip on both sides that would be the gray area.
See, that's the kind of uncertainty I'm talking about. You shifted a half a block to the west, and this constituent that I've been telling forever not to worry about it is in the green at that point.
Yeah.
And I didn't know he was in the gray before, I mean, that mattered. Now, now we're talking that perhaps we'll shift it a half a block to the west, and he's got to be, he's going to be approached at some point in the near, by near, I mean, the next five or six years, by the near future to acquire that property.
Yeah, and we've.
When are we going to be able to have more certainty about it than this?
I think we'll have more certainty about where the park's going to go in a very short period of time, I mean, a matter of weeks. So, and that'll come back to you all. We're not going to just, you know, make that decision in a vacuum.
This is not unlike the original MAPS process, where we had things changed and moved with time. We have not developed full concepts on any of the projects. We don't know where the convention center's going to be, we don't know where the modern streetcar is going to be, there's still some uncertainty on the parks, we don't have a number of things fully fleshed out, because we didn't spend that, we didn't have the funds and spend engineering time and do all that.
Well, and we didn't have the advisory board in place. You know, to start putting these things in place before the advisory board gets in place, I think is not hurt.
Then why are we putting this in? Why are we doing this then?
We're doing it in conjunction. The advisory board will be in place, and we're going to coordinate that with them as we go forward. We're trying to do things on a parallel path. On the original MAPS, the Ford Center got moved, the ballpark got moved, the canal got moved. Steve Lackman wrote a story this morning about the library being moved, and how that actually ended up being a very fortunate thing for the city because of that decision. We've got some things get to be decided.
All those properties you're talking about, the library being moved didn't affect somebody's being in business 75 years ago.
No, but some of the other ones did. The canal clearly did, the Ford Center did, and the ballpark did.
Well, and some of the locations for the library were, you know, existing buildings, so.
I'm at a loss to understand why we want to draw these lines and then refer it to somebody else to determine whether we redraw the lines. That's my point. I'm not opposed to it. I don't take this as opposition. But when you've got a business to operate, you don't want that kind of uncertainty. So the more certainty we can give those people that pay taxes and that live here, the better off we're going to be.
The simple answer is, we're trying to get out of front on some of these things so we can accomplish them and get some of the projects going quicker than later, and this is an attempt.
Well, I don't know how that accomplishes this, if we're going to refer this to this advisory committee and then ask the advisory committee to tell us whether or not to move the lines or not.
Well, we're not, I don't think the advisory panel is talking about moving the acquisition line. It's moving where the park goes. And so the acquisition area.
And have to buy for the park?
Yes, for the park, but it doesn't, it doesn't change the acquisition area. And our, like I said earlier, our priority is going to be the north park. Purchasing Promenade Park will come at a later time.
Surely, you don't think that this panel that's coming here Friday is going to say it's a good idea to have those auto salvage places immediately east of it on Robinson? Surely, I mean, I don't know why we didn't do that in the first place. I mean, those on Robinson, as you go south on Robinson, you look to the east, that is not going to be conducive to having a nice new park there. It's just not. So we know that it's likely that we'll either move the park to the west and take property that now we don't plan to take, or we'll include that strip to the east. I mean, I think the line's going to move, and I think we're building in, we're taking, we're running the risk of building in constituent concerns about the, redundancy is my middle name, I think, but the uncertainty of what we're doing. I would just like to see us try to be as quickly as we can, be as certain as we can, because people have to make plans based on these decisions.
We, and that's what we were trying to do, is to be, this is what we know today. So we were trying to move forward so that we can give those people some reassurance about what is in the acquisition area and what is not. The acquisition boundaries will change in the future, I think. You know, some of it, you know, another factor that's out there is the location of the convention center. And if that is in this area, you know, once that site's determined, the acquisition area may again have to change. So that's another situation where there is some uncertainty, but this is what we know today.
Let's go to Skip and Brian, and then try to move forward on it. Skip? Okay, Brian?
I'm not going to kick at that horse, but Pete, I have to comment on some of the things that Pete said. We're up here playing games with people's lives. We look at it on a map, and it's arbitrary properties, and we can move them around at will. These people, this is their lives. They have got to know. I mean, the problem with our economy right now is uncertainty. And for somebody who runs a business, who has no idea what's going to happen, it is a horrible, horrible environment. And I think that, I think that anybody down there needs to know yes or no what's going to happen, and not this, well, you know, within the next 10 years, you should know. You know, I just, that's just not right, to put somebody in that kind of an environment. Do they grow their business? Do they invest in their business? Do they shut their business? Do they sell their business? They don't know. And on that, on that point, is the Urban Renewal's plan to compensate the businesses for loss of revenue?
He would have a relocation plan where they would, could go to the new business site, and hopefully there would be no loss of business income.
Okay, so you expect that they can close their business and open it so fast, and establish their clientele back so fast that they will not see any loss of revenue?
No, sir, I, no, I cannot say that.
Okay, well, I can say that they wouldn't. I can say they will notice a loss. So you're going to compensate them for the property, you're going to compensate them for the moving expenses, but you're not going to compensate them for loss of revenue. So they're going to move and then go out of business, because they don't have the revenues to sustain their business.
I may be able to address that. I'm Leslie Bachelor, the Associate General Counsel for Urban Renewal. The relocation benefits are highly detailed, but I can give some general principles that might provide council with some comfort. One of the things, in addition to moving expenses that's offered to a business, is re-establishment expenses. And those can include such things as advertising the new location, it can include modifications to the building where it's relocated to make it better fit the needs of the business. to the building where it's relocated, to make it better fit the needs of the business. It can include an estimated increased cost of operation. And so it goes to your point, that it's not just a matter of picking up a business's possessions, and plopping them down someplace else. We recognize that relocation is a difficult process. And so, before anyone is even, before their property is even acquired, one of the things we would have the relocation specialists do, is sit down in a face-to-face meeting with the owner of that business, to talk about their needs, their preferences, the requirements, the size needs, in order to help them identify a suitable alternative location. You know, we're not under the illusion that, that that, you know, is, is pain-free, but, but we do have the commitment to, to minimize the hardship. That's a legal obligation, and we take it quite seriously.
So is loss of revenue in there?
If the loss of revenue can be tied to an increased cost of doing business elsewhere, or can otherwise be addressed by advertising the new location, and those loss, that those sorts of costs increase, then, then yes, it is addressed. There's not an overall look at profitability, and an effort to make up for, for lost profits over time, because that can be the result of so many different factors. But to the extent that it is a result of the move, and costs from the move, then yes, that's included in the reestablishment expenses.
Okay, so a business that's been there for seven years, has been profitable, they move, they're no longer profitable and have to close, is that not pretty clear that, that the reason why they had that problem was because they, they had to move?
I think you would have to know more about the circumstances.
All right, any other comments or questions? Will we take a motion? Oh, that turned it over. All right, Louis Morgan. I'll need you to give us your name and address for the record, please.
Louis Morgan. Uh, I live at 805 Rancho State Boulevard, Yukon, which is in Oklahoma City. I also own the property at 406 West Fourth, on ten lots there. I am also a, what we call a federal licensed DOT retest facility. Okay. So this is, he says, be very, very low downtime. Disagree with him. If I don't get DOT to give me a permission to move my facility, it could take as high as thirty to ninety days, before I could reopen my facility. Because my license is to my address. And the only way I would be able to move my facility, and move right back in, is then I would have to buy all brand-new equipment, from one end to the other, have it certified, have it surveyed, and then get permission from Washington DC to transfer my license to the new address. Thank you. Now to address the quartershores. Quartershores were brought to the quartershores people, over a year, two years ago. And none of us landowners, we were all notified by the planning commission. None of us, we didn't like it. We liked the idea of the park. And, you know, I really would, I do like the idea of bringing, because I grew up in this neighborhood, I've been there for seventy years. And I would like to see the south side grow again. I don't have any complaint with that, I don't have any complaint with the park. I have complaint with the way the city council, the planning commission, and the Urban Renewal is going about this. You all came to us, sold us on the program, then you went to the people. You got the people to vote for MAPS. You did not get the people to vote for quartershores. You kind of shortchanged them there a little bit. Because the quarter, the MAPS program is a small portion to what quartershores is. And then last month, it was brought to the council for a blow, for another blow to the people on the south side, that you bite, and you, you put in eminent domain on these people. And you people keep telling us, oh, we're not gonna use eminent domain, but you're here, here to vote, now, to put in this plan. Now, you've already hit these guys in the face, you're telling these people they're gonna have to move. I've already been told that I'm out, by Russell over here. Because I'm at the very beginning of your main park. They don't want me there. After I've been there for seventy years, I've paid taxes on there for seventy years, my mother, my dad, me, I have a, I have a daughter that's my president of my company, and now you're telling me, my, I'm out of there. Now, that's fine, I don't mind moving, but you're gonna pay me three or four hundred thousand dollars to move that facility? That's what's probably gonna cost. If I have to go, if I have to go and transfer from one to the other with no downtime, with, let's say, a week's downtime. Otherwise, it's three months downtime. That would completely put me out of business, and when I go out of business, that's gonna put a hurt to me, that's gonna be, put a hurt to all the fire departments, the medical industry, the welding industry, that supplies oxygen, helium, argon, CO2, to the restaurants, and all the other facilities in the Oklahoma, because I'm the only facility in the Oklahoma within a five-hundred-mile radius that does this. There's other people in, in this area. You have Blumenthal, you have ARK. Eventually, this plan's gonna grow. That blue line is gonna go, is gonna come down, it's gonna start going over, and gonna go back up, and you're gonna, you're gonna be buying, you're buying this land, you've lighted the area, so that the city can buy this property at a better price, and sell it to developers, so the developers can make a lot of money. You say it's to protect the park, to protect the park. I disagree. You guys are, you guys are doing like the Yankees did, or the government did to the Indians. You say one thing, but you vote a different way. You know, we voted to put you people in office here. We didn't put you in here to completely... Nobody knows where the damn blue line's gonna go to next. We don't know where we're gonna go next. Blumenthal's got millions of dollars tied up down there, and he, he don't know whether he's gonna be there tomorrow, two years from now. It's gonna cost him thirty, forty million dollars to move his plan again. He's already moved the damn thing once. You're gonna ask him to move it again? You've got Ozarka Water, that takes a federal permit to real as well. He's just got to put in hundreds of thousands of dollars in that, in that building there, and now, you're gonna tear down the interstate, and then you're gonna build, you're gonna build condominiums there. Is that right to him? How many people does he hire? How much taxes do those people pay? What about if he decides to close up? How many people are you all gonna put out of business with this plan, uh, this quartershore? Now, if you, you said to us, landowners, we're gonna build a park, and you can sell your property to the developers. That's not the way it's coming. That's not the way, that is not the way you guys are voting. You are voting for the developers. You're not voting for the citizens of Oklahoma City. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Mr. Morgan. Any other comments before we go forward? All right, how about a motion? Okay, we're voting on item 8F. We have a motion and a second. All right, cast your votes on 8F. Passes by a count of seven to one. And then a motion on item 8G. You have a second? All right, votes on 8G, and it passes seven to one. Thank you all for all your work on this. I know the, the project and the process continues. We'll move on to item 8H. I understand this one's good to go, we don't need executive session on 8H, do we? Continuation for, for a sergeant? You have a second? All right, we're voting on 8H. Cast your votes. And it passes seven-one, eight-zero. Okay? 8I, I understand we do need executive session? Is that right?
That's correct.
All right. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 8J, I understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
All right, how about a vote on that? Okay, item 8J is the stricken. All right, item 8K is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak, and are any items listed in there, 8K? All right, looks like we're good to go. How about a motion? Second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item nine is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak, and are any items listed in item nine? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council. Sam, you wanna get a starter?
Thank you, Mayor. A, a couple of things. On the, your comment, Mayor, with regards to the new truancy ordinance and tracking it, could we, city managers, in six months after it's instituted, have some report back to us as to, not only the fines that were levied, but the tracking of the, what results that had to do with the student, if any?
Yeah, we'd be happy to, six months?
Yes.
We'd be happy to do that.
And then, secondly, on this item that just kind of leaves us here in a, a boom and doom with the last businessman, do we, and not do we have the funds, but do, do we legally, as a city, have an opportunity in relocation of property such as the area we're talking about? Over and above Urban Renewal's relocation benefits, have the legal authority, if we choose to, to make whole, uh, situations like this gentleman?
People that can answer that question off the top of their heads are either back there, have left now. Can we come back with you on an answer to that? We'll get you a memo on that.
All right.
And last, Mayor, just a, a comment on one of the manager's reports we asked for with regards to billboard census results, now that the, this is not the electronic message boards, but the previous ordinance, a couple of years ago, on billboards. And just doing a little simple math with respect to his report, if we look at the, the years for which permits were granted prior to the ordinance, nineteen eighty-three to, to the year two thousand and seven, we permitted about twenty-one, twenty-two large, that's the six hundred and seventy-two square foot billboards a year during that span of time. And then after the new ordinance was passed, with regards to these same billboards, we had permitted three in the last year-plus, probably year, year and a half, compared to the twenty-one, twenty-two per year previously. I, I don't know whether that's an indication that the city is, has become saturated with the, the large billboards, or whether we're moving in the right direction, but appreciate the report.
Okay, Larry?
I'd like to thank the folks at Windsor Forest Neighborhood Association for the cherry supper that my wife and I got to go to Saturday night, and for the good rapport, and the encouragement, and the enthusiasm the citizens had to move Oklahoma City forward. And then also last week, I'd like to commend the, the Wann Group and Kim Lowe for working with a developer on a very nice infield project on North Ann Arbor, and how things should go, that, to do infield projects, and have the neighborhood involved, and have a quality product at the end. And I think it's because of the participation of citizens like Kim Lowe and the rest of the Wann Group that that was accomplished. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, Pete? Brian?
Just one thing, and it, it kind of goes back to the issue with the, the bonds that Larry had mentioned. You know, it seems like that we, that we, that we get into this situation quite a bit, where we're having to ask, you know, if we delay something, is it fatal? Maybe, maybe the process should be that that stuff comes to us further ahead of time, with the anticipation that there may be some questions, as opposed to it's just gonna be passed and go on without any questions. Maybe that would not put us in a position to where we're having to make a vote based on the immediacy of it, but yet we can have time to make a vote based on the conscience and the, and questions that we may have.
I think typically that happens, but maybe it didn't in this case. Your points, we'll, we'll take it, I think.
Major financial issues, we try to bring those up, and we can early introduce and do that, and we've recently changed our ordinance process, like we did today, on introductions. We did the presentation this morning on, on, ahead of the adoption of the ordinance. We used to do that upon adoption, we're now pushing that at Councilman Bowman's request, to, to do that at the time of the introduction, so we're, we're trying to work in that direction.
Okay, Meg?
Very quickly, Mayor, thank you very much. I, I think everybody knows that graffiti has become a hot topic in the city, and one that's working very hard on with Police Chief City and others. And I wanted to recognize, one of our officers, Inspector Kevin Johnson, was recognized last week by the Sons of the American Revolution for the work that he's done. Inspector Johnson has really done a great job, he's on the forefront of this battle that we're in, he's developed a database, identifying lots of these folks, and within the last week, I think, three specific groups of taggers have been apprehended by the police officers. They're doing a great job, and I really wanna thank them for that, it will make a big difference for our community. And the second thing is, on Saturday, I had an opportunity to visit our animal shelter out on South Twenty-Ninth Street, and I'd like to compliment Kathleen English and her whole staff, they're doing such a great job over there. The place was full of families, you know, looking to adopt pets, and a really nice facility, and I wanna, again, just compliment the city staff for their work.
All right, Skip?
Yes. I would like to thank the Tinker Air Force Base, the Distribution Center, for the very fine welcome that they, and warm reception they gave the last Wednesday to be their, our keynote speaker for their diversity program. And I was just totally impressed with the diversity of the audience, of approximately almost a hundred and fifty, two hundred people, for their new program, and, and also to Ebenezer Baptist Church for the same thing, for their heritage program, as far as their black heritage program yesterday. I wanna say that, I made a statement earlier when, when Reverend Barris was here, as it relates to education, and, and everybody that knows me know that that is something that's very, very dear and compassionate to me, and I'm very compassionate about the fact that we have so many young people in this city that are not receiving a quality education, and it can be blamed from, from the day that the school is open, to, to the parents, to the teachers, to the children, to the city. But it's, it's a sad state of affairs. I continue to say that we have not been more engaging in reference to addressing the issue of quality education for our children. And, uh, one of the things that was brought out, in, in this African-American pastor that, that came here, truly is concerned about the plight and the, 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 the future of so many African-American children, not just in Ward Seven. And I wanna make the record clear, that sometimes we tend to be too geographically designating issues that, that exist in this city. I think this last report that we saw from the Oklahoma City MAPS Foundation clearly shows that we have a rampant problem all over this city. And you have schools that's on the northwest side of Oklahoma City, that are seventy-five percent African-Americans, you have schools that's on the south side of this city, that are seventy-five percent Hispanic, you have schools on the north side of Oklahoma, northeast side of Oklahoma City, that are seventy-five to ninety percent all African-Americans. But the fact is, is that all of these children, at some point in time, is going to meet you, they're going to meet me, they're gonna meet your children, they're gonna meet your grandchildren. And if we don't start looking at this as a global problem in our city, and wrap our arms around this whole issue, we all gonna be doomed at some point in time. Because if they don't get a quality education, and if we continue to stop and, and to wait five or six years before we get back in and do a study as it relates to the Oklahoma City Foundation's program, that this last report clearly shows, I just think that we need to be involved in this almost on a weekly basis, to address these issues, if we're gonna ever solve the problem of... to ever solve the problem of education in this city. And I just find that it's just...it's a sad state of this day that we had to sit here and vote on an ordinance that would give these type of enforcements just for people to be in school.
Pat?
Your Honor, I'd like to make this suggestion that we, on the adoption of new ordinances, we adopt a three-step process. The first step would be the introduction of the ordinance, a presentation from the appropriate staff member explaining what the ordinance is all about and why we're doing it. And the second step would be a subsequent city council meeting, an opportunity for the public to make comments. And then in order to indicate to the public that we're taking their comments seriously, we would wait a week before we go through the formal adoption of the ordinance. Something to think about, to encourage the public to make comments and to give them a feeling that we are serious about listening to their comments, wanting in more time than it would take just to listen and react as we did this morning. This is a suggestion.
Mayor, I have...I passed, but I have additional comment. Ms. Sally reminded me of something. Last night I had dinner with Brian Mon, who's the District Two County Commissioner, and he indicated that his county commission district is interested in taking up part of the responsibilities with regard to graffiti. And he'll be contacting you, I think, the manager shortly because that's kind of what I told him. But I was impressed with the fact that he believes, as do a lot of people, that graffiti is really the signal that we've lost control of things. And he's willing to...he's worked out an agreement with the Community Service Division of the Public Defender's Office where we may be able to get manpower at a very, very economical cost to do it. And he'll be looking for ways to get the chemicals and so forth and just have a real serious blitz of his, which is South Oklahoma City, but it's not...there's no reason it couldn't be done all across the city. And he'll be contacting...like I said, I was very impressed with the fact he's concerned about...because I think he recognizes, as we all do, what graffiti signals, and that is that we're losing control of areas, neighborhoods, crime, kids, whatever.
Pete, that would be absolutely outstanding. I think, given this current budget situation, internally, we're, you know, potentially facing some changes in the personnel that can provide those services. So if we could partner with the county, that would just be outstanding.
Well, he told me he'd already made an agreement with Bob Rabbitt, who's a public defender, to funnel some folks that are in the community service program to him, which would be some manpower. So that could be a way to get the business end of it taken care of as opposed to the criminal side of it.
Okay. City manager reports?
Just very quickly on the sales tax collections for February. February collections were down 7.29% from the previous year's collections. But on the positive note, that's the best month we've seen since August. And so it is not great news, but it's certainly much, much better than we saw in...our worst month was December, and we've had a lot of months in the 12% below range. And this is possibly a step in the right direction.
And no one in the chambers for citizens to be heard, so we have an executive session and we'll be right back.